I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, February 6th, 2023. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town's cable information channel 1301 and on the town's YouTube channel. I'm Steve McDougal, the mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. To her left is Councilmember Todd Carnes. To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker. To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis. To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Ron Williams if he will give tonight's opening invocation for tonight's meeting.
Yes, sir. Lord, we thank you for this awesome weather we had today. We thank you for this beautiful town that we have to live in and enjoy. We thank you for the teachers and students that have attended our schools and try to do good work in school. We thank you for our community leaders and our business leaders who work hard to make Lexington a great place to live. We ask that you lead and guide us tonight as we make some decisions for the town and as we move forward in the future, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this time, I'd like to introduce retired First Lieutenant Tom Lucas. If Mr. Lucas, if you would, come to the microphone and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for tonight. Thank you.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lucas, thank you again for being with us. Thank you for being a part of our community and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Tonight's a pretty special night. This is the State of the Town. We have produced a State of the Town video to highlight the town's 2022 achievements and also spotlights a few of the upcoming projects that you will see around town. At this time, Michael.
I'm Mayor Steve McDougal, and welcome to the 2023 State of the Town address. This reviews some of our most notable accomplishments and takes a look at some of the exciting things happening in the year ahead. One of the biggest projects underway right now is the renovation and expansion of Virginia Hilton Park. The park will more than double in size and total more than 15 acres. It is a complete upgrade and will feature a new entrance, all-new playground equipment, walking trails, splash pad, exercise stations, and more. Construction is expected to last throughout this year. The work on Old Mill Pond Dam is almost complete, and soon the town will start construction on the new walking trail that wraps around the pond. The path is one mile long and will be paved and lighted. When you're in the downtown area, you'll notice the new wayfinding directional signage that has been installed. These signs point people to popular destinations located within the town limits, and there are plans to add them throughout different areas of town. In addition to quality-of-life projects, council continues to prioritize traffic improvements, and we made significant progress, including here, where we widened North Lake Drive in front of Lexington Elementary School. This project also reconfigured Harmon Street to have direct access to North Lake at a new stoplight. There is another phase planned for the future that will start at Columbia Avenue and extend down North Lake to the area in front of Herndon Chevrolet. The final phase of the adaptive signalization system went live, and there was a 25% decrease in travel time through the town's main corridor. Now, all of the town-maintained signals are equipped with cameras that monitor traffic and make adjustments in real time. Traffic has also been flowing better at Mineral Springs Road and 378 after a dedicated lane was added to turn right onto Highway 378. This year, there will be additional improvements made at this intersection when we add a dedicated right-turn lane on Highway 378 for people turning onto Mineral Springs Road. The award-winning Ice House Amphitheater continues to be a driving catalyst for growth and development on Main Street. We held a record number of nearly 100 concerts and events at the Ice House Amphitheater last year, and soon, the final piece of the overall Ice House project will be completed. The building will be home to a new restaurant and retail business on the first floor and a professional office on the second floor. The town completed an 18-month project to completely rewrite the town's comprehensive land use plan, which will help ensure meaningful growth in the future and support development of the downtown area. The Police Department continues to make Lexington a safe place to live and raise a family. Multiple LPD officers were recognized with statewide awards for their work. Officers also worked hard to keep the community safe on the roadways, and there was a 28% decrease in DUI crimes over the last 12 months. Last year, LPD instructors taught classes to over 1,200 people on how to respond during an active shooter situation and how to help stop life-threatening bleeding in emergency situations. The town made substantial progress in the I-20 Utility Service Area by closing three large sewage lagoons. In doing so, it eliminates any possibility that raw sewage could contaminate the water in this area. Our Finance Department was recognized nationally with an award for transparency and overall financial health for the 24th year. They also received recognition for preparing the highest-quality budget documents for the 14th year. The town's vision plan is one of the reasons behind our tremendous success. There's never been a better time to be part of the Lexington community, and I'm proud to serve as your mayor.
I'd like to recognize my fellow council members for their service. Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. Councilwoman Kathy Manis. Councilman Todd Carnes. Councilman Ron Williams. Councilman Steve Baker. And Councilman Todd Lyle. I'd like to thank them and staff for their dedication to the town. Big hand goes out to Michael and all the work he put out there with me trying to make that look good. You did a good job. We have a lot to be proud of here in the town of Lexington. As you can see, there's a lot of things that are coming up in the future for this town, and we feel like we're in a very good place. Could not do it without this group of people up here, so big round of applause for everyone up here as well. You can catch this video again on the Community Access Channel 1301, also on the town's YouTube channel. Thank y'all very much for indulging in the State of the Town. At this time, we'll move right into our executive session report, report on tonight's meeting. Tonight, we had one routine personnel matter. We had two legal issues. One was issued regarding pending litigation, and one was advice regarding agenda items. We had one contractual issue that was a downtown development issue. No vote was taken in executive session other than to vote to adjourn executive session. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report? Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyle, second set motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. On the agenda tonight, are there any deletions of any items from the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move right into approval of minutes. A copy of the minutes from the council work session on January 18, 2023 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections for council work session, January 18, 2023? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Manis, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those minutes are approved. At this time, we'll move into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is from Mr. Jordan Lawrence with the Lexington County Chronicle. Jordan, welcome. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mayor. Councilmember, Mr. Council, good evening. Earlier this year, the Chronicle announced the winners of the inaugural Lexington's Top 20 Under 40 Poll, which allowed us, with help from our readers and local chambers of commerce, to highlight some of the county's most impressive young professionals. Among the honorees was Walker Brewer, Lexington's downtown venue promoter. In his role overseeing the programming at the town's centerpiece venue, the Ice House Amphitheater, Brewer has and continues to make a big impact on both Lexington and the Midlands at large. Under his watch, the venue has welcomed such names as Sister Hazel, Parme Lee, and Edwin McCain, as well as establishing the popular free concert series Lexington Live each spring and fall and opening the venue up to musicals, film screenings, and other varied events. These offerings are getting results, drawing 291,000 people to 99 events in 2021 per town estimates. The growing number of eateries and night spots downtown need attractions to help them draw crowds, and at the amphitheater, Walker keeps making that happen. On behalf of the Chronicle, it is my pleasure to congratulate him for being included among
Walker, why don't you step up to the microphone for a minute? You thought you were gonna run away.
I tried.
Listen, we just wanted to say thank you for what you're doing. Walker is a one-man department, so he is his own boss, his own workers, his own staff, and he does a tremendous job for us. Last year, he managed over 96 events at the Ice House Amphitheater. That's amazing, and can't thank you enough for what you've done. We committed to the amphitheater by hiring someone, and man, did we hire the right guy. So thank you so much. Congratulations on your award.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
As well, yes. They do sacrifice a lot for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Walker. Good job. Thank you. Our next presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Kathy Manis. This is a proclamation, National Mentoring Month.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington declaring January 2023 as National Mentoring Month. Whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to recruit quality mentors to provide additional networks of support for young people, and whereas the town of Lexington recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who show up, listen, and guide young people to success in their education, career, and well-being, and whereas mentoring programs like Ezekiel Ministries Mentoring Program make our state and community stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks, and whereas research has demonstrated that mentoring programs have significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures including truancy and absentism, school-related misconduct, and peer support, and whereas National Mentoring Month, it's the time of year to celebrate, evaluate, celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit loving, adult mentors in Lexington. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the town of Lexington that January 2023 is hereby declared National Mentoring Month in the town of Lexington, and all citizens are urged to support mentoring in the town of Lexington, dated the 6th day of February 2023. Somebody here?
Victoria, nice to have you with us. Thank you for being here. If you'd like to add something, you're certainly welcome to.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you for being with us. At this time, we'll move into old business tonight. The agenda has no old business on it, so we'll move right into new business. Our first item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-07-079, located at 346 Park Road. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Dowdy Family Trust owns 0.69 acres located at 346 Park Road, and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family resident is located on this site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential, and Park Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their January meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this property. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Williams, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 431905-001, located at 705 North Lake Drive, and 002, located at 608 Northwood Road. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. PLCW Administrative Trust owns 1.2 acres on two parcels located at 705 North Lake Drive and 606 Northwood Road and has petitioned to annex the property. Scott's Furniture Stores located on the property. Properties in town near these parcels are zoned general commercial and limited commercial. North Lake Drive is classified as an arterial road, and Northwood Road is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their February meeting to recommend a zoning and road classification for these parcels. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carron, second submotion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams. Mr. Poole, I know this property's been in the heart of town for a long time, and I'm sure some things aren't in compliance with our standards. How long will they have to bring those issues into compliance, like signage or...?
Yes, sir. So the zoning ordinance and the sign ordinance, which is also a zoning ordinance, gives 10 years to bring existing signage into compliance. This business in particular does a lot of sale signage that they put up, so that will have to, in the future, meet our requirements, which will probably limit the signage that they do on the temporary stuff. But they'll have 10 years to bring if their sign isn't in standards, and I'm not sure if it is or not. John might be able to answer that. They'd have 10 years before they'd have to do it. Anything else about the property is grandfathered unless they do something. So they would have to change use or something along those lines, maybe build on or something to cause, like, the building to have to be modified or something like that, otherwise it would be grandfathered forever.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? We have a motion from Ms. Manis, a second by Mr. Williams. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Boardwalk Villas condominiums. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. South Carolina law allows annexation of an area if it has been requested by at least 75% of the property owners in an area. The Boardwalk Villas Homeowners Association inquired with us about annexing the neighborhood into the town last fall, and the town created an annexation petition using this method. Boardwalk Villas is a 48-unit condominium complex located in the 1500 block of North Lake Drive. Each unit is privately owned. Common areas in the development are owned and maintained by the HOA. The Homeowners Association recently returned the annexation petition to the town with all 48 individual property owners signing to request annexation. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their February meeting and recommend a zoning and road classification for the area. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Carron makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is first reading of an ordinance amending the Corley Mill Tiff Ordinance. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Corley Mill Tiff Bond Ordinance needs to be updated and amended to address issuance of additional rollover refunding of bands. Due to the unexpected design, engineering, and regulatory delays, including delays directly or indirectly related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Corley Mill redevelopment plant project has not been completed. The delays have resulted in banned rollover refundings beyond the time provided in the original ordinance. I make a motion for first reading approval of an ordinance amending the Corley Mill Tiff Ordinance.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carron, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is Resolution Authorizing the Saks-Gotha Lexington Public Facilities Corporation Bond Anticipation Notes. This is for the Ice House Tiff. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The annual refunding rollover of the Ice House Tiff bands, which come due on May 5, 2023, requires a resolution from Town Council. The attached resolution authorizes the band rollover and matters related thereto. This authorization is necessary due to the project delay from the 2015 flood, which resulted in the rollover period extending beyond the time provided in the original ordinance. This process ensures the bands are properly issued as tax-exempt notes. I am making a motion to adopt resolution authorizing Saks-Gotha Lexington Public Facilities Corporation Bond Anticipation Notes, Ice House Tiff.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carron, second submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is the Pilgrim Point Streetlights. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Historically, the town has paid a portion of the streetlight bill for Pilgrim Point residents. In accordance with the town's residential streetlight ordinance, the Pilgrim Point Homeowners Association has requested that the town, again, pay a pro-rata share of their streetlight bill. Copy of the letter is attached to this. There's 48 lots in Pilgrim Point, and the town ordinance states that the town would be responsible for one streetlight per every six lots, which equals a total of eight lights. The total requested is $2,146.56, and, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for council approval of this.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Williams, second submotion. Any further discussion? Mr. Poole, just for the record. There's a reason we pay this one separately than all of the other neighborhoods in the town, and I think it's important that we explain it.
Yes, sir, certainly. So each neighborhood in the town, the town provides, pays for the streetlights in that neighborhood. There are a few rules around that. You have to have a certain number of houses per light, and you have to have public streets for, you know, us to pay for it automatically. So every other neighborhood in town does that. This neighborhood actually has private streets, so they don't qualify through the standard method. They have to ask every year, and they get the same benefit that all the other neighborhoods get. Council just has to take direct action on it. And were we to ever have another neighborhood that had private streets and streetlights in town, there's a possibility of additionals, because you are allowed to build on private streets if you choose to. So that's why we do it, the way that we do it. They're not getting anything that any other neighborhood in town doesn't get. They just get it automatically, and this neighborhood doesn't.
Very good. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. This is the Market at Ice House Policy Update. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attached is a copy of the proposed update to the Market at Ice House policy. The proposed changes include a $5 vendor fee with a waiver for vendors that have a Town of Lexington business license, limitations on the number of markets allowed for vendor registration, and a limitation on the number of vendors having similar products on the same market date. I make a motion for council approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle? Thank you. Councilmember Lyle, second that motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Yes, sir.
The question was asked at the work session on this item. Wanted to compare what somebody at Soda City might pay, and I can tell you, Walker has done some research for us, and it's significant. So a vendor that is a booth runner at Soda City and goes every week to it would pay $4,589 over the course of a year. So that's a $40 application fee, a $129 fee, and then $84 per month, I mean, per week that they attend. And it's even higher for food trucks. Food trucks pay all the same fees, but rather than $84 a week, they pay $144 a week. So over the course of a year, a food truck that went to every one of their events would pay $7,700. So in comparison, we're saying 50 for the entire year.
Wow. Very good. Everyone clear on that? Any questions or comments? Ms. Manis.
I have a question, and I might have just not read it right or didn't see it. I'm Walker. Thank you. Have to get used to that. If you have multiple, I see where it says a limitation on the number of vendors having similar products.
Yes, ma'am.
So how will you decide, let's say you have four vendors with the same thing?
Yes, ma'am.
How will you decide who's gonna come and who's not gonna come?
So it would be a first-come, first-served basis on each week, and now those vendors can only sign up for half of the markets. So ideally, if we had four, let's just say, soap vendors, they would probably just fill in the holes, and it would be two every week, and it would just alternate through that.
Okay. So it's first come, first served?
Yes, ma'am. So a soap vendor A signed up first, they could sign up for their pick of the nine. I believe it would work out to about nine weeks they could come, and then soap vendor B could pick their nine and so forth.
And is that in here? Did I just not see it?
Yes, ma'am, I believe it's in there. See, are we talking about the limitation on weeks or first come, first served?
Yeah, how they're gonna be selected?
I don't know if it's specifically in there, but it would be first-come, first-served basis. This is how we've done registration every other year.
Okay. But this is the first year we put a limit on, I mean, in the past, if we had four soap vendors, they all could come?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you think that needs to be added in here, since this is something different?
When you say that, you're saying the first-come, first-served language?
Yes, yes.
It certainly could be. There's no harm with doing it. If you directed that in the motion, then we could just make it happen.
Mayor Pro Tem has the motion.
I can agree to amend it to that.
Okay. Perfect, and then if we could update the second, we'd have everything we need.
Mr. Lyle, if you'll update your second?
Sure. I believe we wanted to add parsing out the number of times you can go.
My understanding is that the applications would be first-come, first-served for the slots. For the slots that are available.
Provided that they can only go half the times is what I heard him say, though.
Yes, and that, I believe, is already in the language. It's just the first come, first serve, which has been the policy that what we've done in the past, but may not be spelled out.
Is it just that portion?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'm making an amended motion.
We've gotten a motion. We just need an amended second.
Sorry, second the amendment.
Yes, sir, thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is amended. That's it for our business for this evening. At this time, we'll hear announcements from Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. First up, thank you, Mayor McDougal, for the State of the Town address tonight. This is a great summary of the many projects going on in the town of Lexington. Congratulations again to Walker Brewer for being named one of the Lexington Chronicles 20 Under 40 Professionals. Great job, sir. The Chili Cook-Off will be on Sunday, February 19, from 12 to 5 p.m. This is always a great event hosted by the Town of Lexington, the Lexington County Blowfish, and the Old Mill Brew Pub. If you want to participate as a team, email john@oldmillbrewpub.net. Tickets for the event are $12 in advance or $15 day of the event. Ages 5 through 12 or $5, and kids 4 and under are free. Admission includes music by Freeway Music School and Under the Sun and unlimited chili samples. All proceeds go to local charities. Next up, Traffic Committee will meet on February 15 at 8 a.m. in the third-floor conference room. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, February 20, in observance of President's Day. Town Council will meet again on Tuesday, February 21 at 6 p.m. for the council's work session. The Planning Commission will meet on February 22 at 8 a.m. here in council chambers. And the final announcement for this evening will be that this is my last meeting as a council member. I will be resigning effective the last day of February as a result of moving my family to Florida, and I've got a great opportunity down there, and so if you all will indulge me, I've got a few words. Just want to kind of look back on the past and look forward a little bit, so please indulge me. So first up, just the reason that I ran in the first place in 2015 and 2016 when we were first in the South and we had all the presidential candidates coming through Columbia. I went and I saw all of them speak, and stirring started within me, and so that was doing something to me, just hearing all of them speak. And, and yeah. So then after that Franklin Graham, Billy Graham's son, he came through Columbia. He was doing the Decision America Tour, and he called Christian people to run for office and not just president or senate or house. He's talking about mayor and school board and town council and county council and every other position. And so while he was saying that, it made me feel some kind of way. So left from there, I was talking to my family and talking to my friends. Along the way, I had met Craig Caldwell, who is the chairman of the Lexington County GOP. I was telling him about the stirring within me. He suggested that that was the Holy Spirit and that I should respond to that immediately instead of some future date. And so after considering that, talking to my family, I made the decision to go for it. So then making it onto the ballot. So at that time, we had a signature requirement, and and it was one of those things, if you knew what to do, then you had an advantage. I did not know what to do and therefore had no advantage. Councilmember Carnes and I had discussed that if I made it on the ballot and made it onto council, that we would get rid of that thing, and I'm proud to say we did. So that being said, I had a number of signatures to collect, and in my brain, that number was 1,000. And so I had five weeks to collect my 1,000 signatures. The real number was actually less than that, but it was 1,000 to me. So the first three weeks, I'm out there hustling, knocking doors, you know, doing all kinds of stuff, and it was not very effective. Through the first three weeks, I collected 400 signatures, and I had two weeks to collect another 600. So it was a Sunday night, and I was praying, and I was like, God, if you really want me to do this thing, then like you're going to have to show up and do something. It's not looking good. So then Monday night it rained, and Tuesday night it rained, and Wednesday night it rained, and Thursday night it rained, and that's not ideal weather for going out and getting signatures on a sheet of paper. So I'm like, okay, God, okay. See what you're doing here, like maybe this is my sign to hang it up. Still got a week left. I'm going to go until the end. So that last two weekends is like one full week with two weekends, and friends and family and just people came out of the woodwork to help out. And so where in four weeks I had collected 400 signatures and one week I collected one, I collected another 600 in that final week. So I submitted 1,002 signatures and made it onto the ballot. Once that I was on there, then it was just hustle, hustle, hustle. And David Perry told me that when he was running against Nikki Haley for the state house, that she was in front of all these neighborhoods early in the morning with donuts and coffee and a bunch of signs, and so I was like, well, she kicked your butt, David, so I think I'm going to go do that. So I did, and worked really hard, passed out my coffee, my donuts, was up early, and there was a lot of people that volunteered and helped out, and so want to thank all of them. The end of the day, that was a successful strategy. I ended up on this council. I told the other folks who are running, I wasn't running against any of them. I was just running to win. I felt God called me to run, and therefore I was in it to win it. And six years later, we've done a lot of good stuff. I never imagined that I would sit on a town council or be in any kind of a elected position, and so it's been a real honor. I do want to highlight a few things that we've accomplished in the six years that I've been here and kind of brag for a minute, if you'll indulge me some more. A big thing, when I was knocking on doors and talking to people who's related to traffic projects, and so there are a number of traffic projects that, you know, we can say that we have heard them and we've done some. We've got more coming, and I'm proud of what we've completed. The One Way Pairs was a very significant project. The widening on South Lake, again, very significant. The Jenny Lane Improvement was a huge improvement. If you've got kids that go to school out there or live in the Wellesley neighborhood, that was a big improvement. And there are more traffic projects that are coming. We have the ELTIP, the Lexington Transportation Improvement Plan, with 30-some projects on there. And so when I say that your council hears you, Town of Lexington, about traffic projects, like we hear you. Another thing we've done since I've been here was removing one of the largest polluters in the in the area, the Carolina Water Blue Granite Company is polluting our rivers, polluting our lake. We can proudly say that they are not doing that as a result of our efforts, and that's something I'm very proud of. Another thing that we've done since I've been here was when I first got here, there was a little confusion that I felt because there's so many awesome things that were being talked about inside, and on the outside, folks didn't really know about that as much. And so we ended up bringing Lauren onboard. We've done a phenomenal job of telling our story, and now we've got, what is it, more followers than the city of Charlotte on our Facebook page, which is outrageous, and just a phenomenal job of telling our story. And Lauren, thank you very much. Another thing, just for the citizens, when we go to conferences with MASC and around the state, everywhere we go, people are like, man, wow, you guys got it going on. You're doing such good stuff. You got to tell us how you're doing it. And when I first got here, I heard that, and now I have experienced that. And so it's it's such an encouragement that folks around the state recognize what we're doing and want to emulate that. A few more things, just learnings impact me on a man being in this seat. First is that faith and obedience can take you places you don't even imagine. Again, I never imagined myself sitting in a seat like this. Another thing, when I ran for this, I did not feel like I was qualified at all, and I believe that God qualifies the called instead of calling the qualified. Another thing that has been like one of my things is just a willingness to engage with folks who have different opinions, even when they're controversial, and maintaining a healthy curiosity, asking lots of questions. That has served me well. And then another thing is just growing and problem-solving and searching for solutions. We have tremendous things going on here at the Town of Lexington, and at the same time, we also have significant opportunity to continue improving. Another just recognition I want to offer is for our police department. We've got super professional people in our police department. It is, it's been such an honor to work with them and to do ride-alongs and experience how they work in our community, and when they say that they are looking to to build community and serve like they're serious about it. And so it's just such an honor to have a police department. Feel like they're going to set the bar for me anywhere I go. It's going to be hard for anybody else to live up to their their standard. And I'd like to just kind of wrap this up, saying that your town and your council, like you're in good hands. There are people here that that honor God, that are here for the right reason. Lexington has experienced the black eyes of people being here for the wrong reason, and right now I can tell you that having served with these folks for the number of years, everybody here believes in God, wants to honor Him, and is here for the right reason. And that being said, just looking in the looking forward into the future, the best is yet to come. We've got more exciting things that are going to happen here, and I can't wait to see, even though it will be from a distance, can't wait to see Virginia Hilton Park come to fruition, some more of these traffic projects to be completed, and then some of the other stuff that's coming down the pipe. So that being said, I just want to thank everybody, and that is my speech.
Very good. Very nice, Councilmember Baker. I can echo everything you said, and if you don't mind, I have something I'd like to give you. Your your contribution to what you did in a very, very short period of time was tremendous, and can't thank you enough. Here's a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, recognizing Councilmember Steve Baker for service to the community as a member of the Lexington Town Council. Whereas Steve Baker has been a resident of Lexington since 2001 and immediately became very involved in his community, and whereas he was elected to town council on November 8, 2016, for his first term and swore in as the youngest council member on December 5, 2016, and whereas Steve Baker was re-elected to town council for a second term on November 2, 2021, and whereas he has been considered a very valuable member of town council, not afraid to ask hard questions and always put the town's citizens first, and whereas Steve Baker has been an important decision-maker in all successes that the town is now witnessing, and whereas he will be greatly missed by his fellow council members, staff, and friends as he pursues exciting new opportunities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington that Steve Baker is hereby thanked for his service to the community, and the entire council wishes him success in his new endeavors and much happiness for him and his family. Dated the 6th day of February 2023, Steve McDougal.
Wipe them off. Oh, hang on, they're all coming down.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Steve, we're going to miss you. We're definitely going to miss your family and watching those beautiful little girls. Go ahead.
Yeah. I miss y'all, too. So just about about my little girls, when I won the seat and got sworn in in 2016, my one-year-old Gianna was just face buried in the phone. We're taking all the pictures, and she's here with us tonight. Seven's beautiful, and she's doing great in school. I'm so proud of her. It is an honor to be her father, and it's an honor to be her sister's father as well.
Awesome. Anyone else? Very good. Are there any questions from the news media?
Where are you moving, Steve?
Going to be in the Orlando area. We haven't got a house yet, but we're shooting for winter garden.
Very good. Anyone else? Are there any public comments regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to add? Very good, hearing none. I'd be remiss if I didn't also thank Lauren Barnes for her help with the State of the Town. She did a phenomenal job putting that together, and thank you very much. Appreciate it. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, February 6, 2023. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during this week, and the video will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Without objection, we are adjourned.